Good afternoon. I will call to order the September 19th meeting of the Minneapolis City Planning Commission. My name is Matt Brown. I serve as President of the Commission. I'm joined today by Commissioners Cronzer, Gagnon, Magrino, Sweetsie, Vreeland, and Rockwell. At this time, I'll ask you to silence any mobile devices, and we can get started with the meeting. Our first item of business is to approve the actions from the August 29th meeting. They have a motion to approve those actions. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
And that motion carries. Our next item of business is to approve the agenda. You can find hard copies of the agenda in the hallway. We'll determine which items will be discussed today and which items will be approved on consent. So, starting at the top of the agenda, item number one is the Harriet Avenue Apartments at 2903, 2905, 2907, 2911 Harriet Avenue South and 2900, 2904, 2910, and 2912 Grand Avenue South. That is a final plat. Is anyone wishing to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation on that item? Seeing no one, we'll put item one on consent. Item two is the East End at 724 Third Street South. That is a registered land survey. Is anyone wishing to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation on that item? Seeing no one, we'll put that on consent. Item three is at 4050 and 1/2 and 4082 and 1/2 Washington Avenue North. That is a minor subdivision. Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation on that item? Seeing no one, we'll put item three on consent. Item four is a right-of-way vacation in the vicinity of 31st Avenue Northeast. Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation on item four? Seeing no one, we'll put that on consent. Item five is Tony's Auto Repair at 4049 Fremont Avenue North. Several applications for a new commercial building there. We'll discuss item five. Item six is at 2444 Logan Avenue North, a rezoning petition and variance to the lot area requirement. There is anyone wishing to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation on item six? Seeing no one, we'll put that on consent. Item seven is IBIS Properties LLC at 300 and 316 26th Avenue North, a minor subdivision and variance. Is anyone wishing to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation on that item? Seeing no one, we'll put item seven on consent. Item eight is at 2208 Marshall Street Northeast. That's a conditional use permit to allow a dock. Is anyone wishing to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation on that item? All right, we'll discuss item eight. Item nine is the Comcast Hub Facility Expansion at 4234 Niclet Avenue. That's a conditional use permit for a modification to a building there. Is anyone wishing to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation on item nine? Seeing no one, we'll put that on consent. Item 10 is at 3454 33rd Avenue South. That's a rezoning application. We will discuss item 10. Item 11 is the Thor Construction Headquarters at 1256 Penn Avenue North and 1235 through 1243 Oliver Avenue North. Several applications for a new building there. We will discuss item 11. Item 12 is at 1501 Como Avenue Southeast. Several applications for a new multifamily building there. Is anyone wishing to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation on item 12? Seeing no one, we'll put item 12 on consent. Item 13 is a tax amendment to the land subdivision regulations related to parkland dedication. Is anyone wishing to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation on item 13? Seeing no one, we'll put that on consent. Item 14 is a zoning code text amendment related to snow storage sites. Is anyone wishing to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation on item 14? Seeing no one, we'll put that on consent. So, our agenda as amended is as follows. Items 1, 2, 3, 4, 6, 7, 9, 12, 13, and 14 will be on consent. We will discuss items 5, 8, 10, and 11. Commissioners may have a motion to approve the agenda as amended. We have a motion and a second. All in favor? And that motion carries. Our next item of business is to consider the Committee of the Whole Consent Agenda, and at the September 1st Committee of the Whole meeting, we considered a series of land sales as part of the Green Homes North program. All the addresses, there are several of them, are noted in the agenda, so I will not read them all. We found that those sales were consistent with the comprehensive plan. We also considered a land sale for the construction of a single-family home at 4050 Third Avenue South. Found that that was consistent with the comprehensive plan. And finally, we considered a modification to the Common Development and Redevelopment Plan for the Common Tax Increment Financing Plan related to the 9th Street and Hennepin Avenue redevelopment plan for the Solera Building. We found that that was consistent with the comprehensive plan. Commissioners may have a motion to find that those items are consistent with the comprehensive plan. We have a motion and a second. All in favor? And that motion carries. We'll move on to the public hearing portion of the meeting, and at this time, I will open the public hearing for the items on the consent agenda. So, again, that is items 1, 2, 3, 4, 6, 7, 9, 12, 13, and 14. Is anyone wishing to speak on any of those items? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing, and Commissioners may have a motion to approve the consent agenda. We have a motion and a second. All in favor? And that motion carries. Next, we'll move on to our items for discussion. We'll start with item five, which is Tony's Auto Repair at 4049 Fremont Avenue North, and staff is Ms. Smith. Mr. Cronzer, I know you had a question about this item. Maybe you could ask that of Ms. Smith, and we can keep things fairly brief.
Can you walk through the alternative compliance for the exterior materials? And maybe prior to that, just lay us out the site plan, the neighboring house, and what sides of the building face the public streets?
What was the last part?
What faces of the building face the public streets?
Okay. Is this? Put this on? Okay. The application before you is at 4049 Fremont Avenue North, and it's a corner property located at 41st Avenue North in Fremont. Here's the zoning map. And the applicant is proposing to rebuild a building that used to be there, burnt down in January. They're proposing almost the same footprint for the building, except for it would eliminate some of the parking that was between the building and 41st Avenue North, and build that out a little bit more towards the corner. As a result, they're going to need a variance to reduce the required front yard along 41st Avenue North for a reverse corner. There's a setback requirement because of the adjacent residential use, even though this is in the C1 zoning district. They also need a conditional use permit for establishing a minor auto repair in the C1 neighborhood commercial district. That's needed, even though they have had the existing auto repair in the past, they do not have the non-conforming rights. And then, to reduce the minimum parking requirement from four to two spaces, and then site plan review. So, there were several items that required alternative compliance. This is a very small lot in size, 4,000 square feet. Because of the adjacent residential uses to the west and to the south, they have front yard setback requirements on both sides. Here's a site plan, just to go over that. So, as you can see here, this is where the building is going closer to the property line along 41st Avenue South. This is where the other existing parking area was, and they're complying now with the ADA requirements for accessibility, and so there are only two spaces provided on-site, so there's a variance required. There is adequate maneuvering area, and then the frontage is along Fremont Avenue South, uh, north, excuse me. So, as I mentioned, there are several alternative compliance items requested as outlined in the staff report, and I believe the question is, what is the alternative compliance for exterior materials on the west side? And so, that would be this elevation, the maximum allowed percentage of stucco in zoning code is 75% on one elevation, and this would be 97% stucco. Staff has recommended granting alternative compliance for that particular item. And I can get into the reasoning just a bit. So, one of the things that mitigates the excess of 75% of stucco on this side, even though it is next to residential uses, it is a very small-scale building. It's a one-story building, 17 feet in height, 37 feet long. There would be coniferous shrubs and clear-story windows provided along this elevation, and so staff felt that this warranted granting alternative compliance. The building itself is compatible on all four sides with brick and stucco. If there are any other questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Mr. Cronzer?
Could you put up a site plan?
Yes.
Please. Thank you. Can you show us where the house to the south is in relationship to the front of this building proposed?
Yeah. Actually, so here's, I'll show you on the site plan, but I think maybe the aerial will help a little bit more. So, there's the site plan.
What I'm curious about is, with the new proposed building, where does that face line up with the face of the building to the south? Which I don't know if the aerial will show us that.
Okay. I'm, um, so the building, the, the west elevation will be facing this side.
Yeah.
So, it's kind of twisted. Sorry. I'm not sure if that helps.
Maybe go to the south.
It's here.
The site plan. What about the building to the south, not to the west?
Okay, the building to the south?
Yes. Well, I guess my question is, it seems like the brick on the south elevation will be covered up by the building to the south, because they're almost in line with each other. Is that true?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Um, the brick itself, I guess, that would, yes, you're right.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
All right. Are there any further questions of staff? Hearing none. At this time, I'll open the public hearing for this item, and if the applicant is here, maybe you could speak first and see if you have anything to add. Please state your name and address for the record. If you can come around to the center microphone here.
Hello, Council. My name's James Kroll, and I'm representing Complete Construction, or the contractors. This is Tony McSed, the owner of the auto shop, and I guess, do you have any questions for?
Yeah, we can see if anyone has any questions for you. Mr. Cronzer, your question's been answered. I think, I think we're fine then. All right. Yeah, if you don't have anything to add, we can see if there are any other speakers on this item. Is anyone else wishing to speak on item five? Yes, please come to the microphone and state your name and address.
Hi, I'm Gina Louise. I live at 4101 Emerson Avenue North, so I just live across the corner, and Tony has been an amazing neighbor. Everyone in the neighborhood is really appreciative of him. Can't help but love having a Buddhist mechanic in your neighborhood. He picks up the garbage every day, all along the whole block, and he gives people credit when they can afford, and he's just been a joy to have in our neighborhood, and we can't wait to have him back. So, we hope this goes through for him. Thanks.
All right, thank you. And is there anyone else wishing to speak on this item? Yes, please state your name and address for the record.
I'm Barbara Adlers at 4110 Fremont. I've been there six years, and my daughter's car broke down, and she had to go to St. Kate's, and Tony was the one to fix it. And he helps with everything, you know? It's a wonderful person.
Right, thank you. Appreciate the nice testimonials. If there's no one else wishing to speak on this item, we'll close the public hearing, and Commissioners, we have several applications before us, total of four. Would someone like to make a motion? All right, we have a motion and a second to approve items A, B, C, and D. Commissioner Cronzer?
I'd like to add a recommendation, a condition on the site plan review. And I will speak to that as soon as I get done stating this. So, my ninth, the ninth proposed condition would be the north elevation shall be all brick except for the stucco cornice, and the south elevation shall be all stucco. And I'll speak to that in a second.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Commissioner Cronzer?
Yeah, my thought is here, we've got a nice little corner building. It's, you know, it's a fine use. I love my corner mechanic, too. It's, it'd be another set of town. But I felt, I feel that the good material should be placed on the public street sides, and the brick on the south side really doesn't do much, since it's facing a house, and that house is pretty close to the proposed building. So, I thought we should, in order to give alternative compliance to the west and out the south, we put the brick along the north, it's along the street, it makes a nice little corner building that looks very simple and has a lot of good durability over the years. So, that's the rationale for that condition.
Thank you. No one else wishes to speak on that item? Commissioner Bender?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just often want to give the applicant a chance to just respond to these kinds of conditions as we add them, just so we know as we're voting how that sounds to you. I know it's been just sort of presented here quickly, but...
And you're referring to the, what?
To this condition that would be added to the approval.
Yeah, and one of the things is that, you know, as far as the price of the building, we tried to keep it not, you know, as low as we could, you know, just to, you know, and with keeping, you know, in compliance, as close compliance as we can to the having all, you know, like you say, the 75% stucco, but yeah, it would, it would add considerably, well, not considerably, it would add quite a bit if we did have to go with brick on the other elevations, so.
Commissioner Lukey, here.
Yeah, I just had a question. So, the condition that's being added would, correct me if I'm wrong, Commissioner Cronzer, remove it from the partial on the one facade and instead move it to another? So, you'd have two facades that were entirely, for the most part, brick, and two that were entirely stucco? So, it wouldn't be all four? Is that an undue hardship, or would you say that that's reasonable, and that it would really only be adding a little bit of brick?
So, you're saying actually cover the whole, the whole frontage?
Um, yeah, the two street-facing corners, elevations would be brick, and the other two that face residential properties would be stucco, I think is what's being proposed, is my understanding.
George, maybe you can speak to that. Did we have, were we proposing brick?
Yeah, Mayling, could you possibly put that up there?
We're showing, we're showing on the, is that the, is that the south?
And if we can have you stand in front of a microphone, it'd be good, just so that's picked up.
Okay. So, as I understand what you're saying is, we have some partial brick on the north elevation and some partial brick on the west elevation, and you're saying to take that brick that we have there and put it on the north side, and then infill that with stucco? Is that what I'm understanding your suggestion is?
The condition is to make both the east face and the north face of the building brick up to the stucco cornice, and to remove the brick from the south elevation.
We can do that.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, and is there any further discussion on that condition? I don't think we have our questions answered as well. Why don't we do a voice vote on adding that ninth condition? And that is a condition to require that the north elevation be all brick, with the exception of stucco cornice, and that the south elevation shall be all stucco. All in favor of adding that condition signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries. We can go back to our original motion then, which is to approve all four applications, items A, B, C, and D. Is there any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none. Clerk, please call the roll.
Bender?
Aye.
Gagnon?
Aye.
Cronzer?
Aye.
Lukey, here?
Aye.
Magrino?
Aye.
Rockwell?
Aye.
Sweetsie?
Aye.
Vreeland?
Aye.
That's 8-0.
Okay, and that motion carries. That concludes our discussion on item five. Our next item for discussion is item eight, at 2208 Marshall Street Northeast, and staff is, once again, Ms. Smith.
The application is to grant a conditional use permit for an existing dock in the floodplain overlay district. The zoning district is actually our six multifamily district. It has two overlays, the Shoreland overlay and the Mississippi River Critical Area overlay. The dock is technically in the floodplain, so that those rules also apply. I believe there was a question about, oh, should I discuss the memorandum, Mr. Wittenberg? Or?
I think it'd be a good idea to bring that up, sure.
Okay. Um, well, okay, so what I'll do, let's see. The applicant is proposing a dock that you can see right here. It is approximately 280 square feet in size. There's the access dock, which is about 60 square feet, that's three by 20 feet. There's a platform that is 144 square feet, it's 12 by 12, and then there's a floating dock that is four by 20 feet, which is a total of 80 square feet. And staff is recommending approval for the conditional use permit based on the findings that are in your staff report. However, there has been some concern since the publication of the staff report that there will be a DNR permit, a Department of Natural Resources permit, required for the size of the platform and the dock itself. Therefore, staff is recommending an amendment to the conditions of approval that states the applicant shall demonstrate that all necessary permits have been obtained from the Minnesota Department of Natural Resources. So, that is, that is something that we would recommend. I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right. Commissioners, are there any questions of staff? Hearing none. At this time, I'll open the public hearing for item eight. I'd like to ask the applicant to speak first, if you're in the audience. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is David Samola, and I reside at 2208 Marshall Street Northeast, Minneapolis.
All right, and do you have anything to add to Mayling's presentation?
I don't have anything to add right now, if I could...
Okay, okay. Are there any questions of the applicant? If there are none, you can probably have a seat for the moment, and are there any other speakers? Yes, please come to the microphone and state your name and address for the record.
My name is John Holmberg at 2136 Marshall Street, a neighbor with also a dock on the river, and I'm just curious about the, you're given a, he's required, or asking for a conditional use permit for the dock, but I'm not sure why it's not including the building that's on the bank of the river, also that's there, that has a roof on it. Oops, there's a roof on it, and so there's a structure and stairs, and then also there's a concern about the flotsam that collects on the dock in high waters and large amounts of flotsam being pushed downriver. At one time, causes problems to docks downriver, and I don't know if there's some way to find out of, how we would take care of that kind of stuff. There's a condition that could be put on there that, you know, I'm not sure what it would be, but potentially to notify other people when they're pushing stuff off, or because there's high water every year, there's tons of logs, debris, that all get stuck on the dock, and when they go to push it off, they push it off at one time, and it gets very clogged up on all the other docks, so that would be a concern, and who's responsible for it. The dock has, in the past, gone downriver, so the cables and the ropes have not necessarily are full-proof just because of high water, you know? We really haven't had that high water, and if we had some really high water, there could be problems, so that is a few of my concerns, I guess, at the time, so.
Thank you. Are there any questions of the speaker? I might just ask staff to address the first question that came up related to that additional structure. Mayling, is that simply considered an accessory structure and isn't part of the conditional use permit?
Yeah, I believe, it's really hard to see in this photo. It's also in your packets. Okay, yeah, so this, my understanding from the applicant is that this is a temporary structure, it's the watercraft structure. Here's another shot of the dock without it, so it's not permanently attached to the dock.
No, there's a structure on the bank.
On the bank? Okay, then I'll let the applicant speak to that.
Yeah, maybe if I could speak to that and just help us understand what that structure is, just to clarify.
I purchased the property in 2007, and it had a, it has a deck kind of on the bank, and underneath it is the structure he's referring to. It really isn't a structure, it's just an area underneath a deck. I have mostly disassembled what was, at one time, you know, covered in windows, and it's really just a space under a deck, so I'm not exactly sure why Mr. Holmberg refers to it as a structure. But I'd also like to note that I'm here due to Mr. Holmberg complaining about, complaining about the fact that we did not have a conditional use permit for our dock, which is what he already has, and he obtained through, the process, I think his house was in a condemned state for about five or six years and needed to kind of bring it up to code, and nobody knew about the conditional use permit law until it was uncovered through this process. And then, when he was required to get one, just not everybody, but a few neighbors, he complained about not having a conditional use permit. So, regarding any flotsam or anything floating up, I don't know how it would be any different than any dock on the river, his included. We all have, we're on the river, and it's kind of, things do float down, but we do, you know, keep it clean.
All right. Are there any further questions? Commissioner Lukey, here.
Yes, just to clarify, are you doing any work on the dock, or is this just to bring an existing dock into conformity through a condition?
It's an existing dock that was, it's been there since 1998. I purchased the property in 2007. The city, the rules that required a CUP to not exist at that time, I think they were brought into place around the year 2003, from what I understand in my conversations with Mayling, so, and nobody knew about it, like I said, until, until it was recently unearthed, so now we're coming into compliance with it.
Thank you.
Are there any further questions? Hearing none. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak on this item? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing, and Commissioners, we just, well, the public hearing is closed now. We just have one application before us. We do have an addition of a second condition since the agenda was published, and that is that a DNR permit is obtained for the deck. Would anyone like to make a motion? Or are there any further questions? Commissioner Vreeland?
Yes. Thank you. So, I am both a river advocate and very protective of the public's right to use... use shoreline access and public waters. It, it is a challenge sometimes. We, we really don't want to privatize our public waters. Docks are permitted by the DNR. But the idea is kind of not to build housing or very large structures that go beyond DNR regulations. So I don't know if we have an opinion about whether docks should be limited to eight foot or not. In this case, I, I don't want to set a precedent without giving that some thought. The, the DNR regulations, I mean, we could have different regulations than the DNR, I, I believe. So it, it, it's kind of out of my area of expertise of what we could and should do to regulate docks along the river, aside from what the DNR does. In this case, I also want to make sure that we're not encouraging housing on the river that is badly regulated or not regulated at all. It's okay to dock boats, but if it's not a boat and it doesn't have a functioning motor, it is an inappropriate use of the shoreline. So I just, the, the complexity of who, who regulates what, where, Coast Guard, Corps of Engineers, DNR, us, is pretty complicated. And I certainly have sympathy for an existing dock, and I, I love to see people enjoy the river. But again, it gets pretty complicated that the shoreline and whether folks can actually walk along the shoreline, whether that's public space or not. So it, it's a myriad of complex questions that I do not have the answers to. I'm, I'm glad that we at least recognize that there is a DNR permit required for this dock to exist in its current configuration. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And would anyone like to make a motion on this? Commissioner Rockwell?
Yeah, I'll move to adopt staff recommendation, including the, the additional condition that is included in the memorandum requiring DNR permits be obtained.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? I'll just make a quick comment to address some of Commissioner Freeland's concern. It, it appears that our current city regulations maybe don't address additional performance standards for docks right now. Obviously, there isn't a lot of residential property in Minneapolis that has direct water access, so it's not, not an issue that comes up very often. But it, it seems that any activities that actually occur on the water are more in the purview of the DNR, so, you know, provided, as it stands right now, provided the DNR is okay with this, that's, that's about all the discretion we, we have. So if there's no further discussion, clerk, please call the roll.
Freeland?
Aye.
Squeezy?
Aye.
Rockwell?
Aye.
Magrino?
Aye.
Lukey, here?
Aye.
Cronzer?
Aye.
Gignan?
Aye. Excuse me.
Bender?
Aye.
Eight, zero.
All right, and that motion carries. That concludes our discussion on item eight. Our next item for discussion is item 10, at 3454 33rd Avenue South. And once again, staff is Ms. Smith.
Okay, this application is a petition to rezone property at 3454 33rd Avenue South from the R1A single-family district to the R2B2 family district. And the purpose of this request is so that the applicant may eventually add an accessory dwelling unit to the property. Right now, there is a duplex on the property. It was constructed in 1922, and as far as city records go, we believe that it has been used as a duplex since then, and therefore retains legally non-conforming rights to operate as a duplex in the R1A district. However, with the accessory dwelling unit ordinance, you're only able to have up to, you, you must have it accessory to a permitted single-family home or duplex. And so this is not technically permitted, it's legally non-conforming. So the applicant would like to first rezone the property and then add an accessory dwelling unit to do so. The existing zoning, as I mentioned, is R1A. The site and the surrounding blocks are consistently zoned R1A in this area. The site is located at the northwest corner of the intersection of 33rd Avenue South and 35th Street East in the Howe neighborhood. All but 11 of the 81 properties within a 350-foot radius contain single-family homes. Of the seven properties that do not contain single-family homes, let's see, five are legally non-conforming, I'm sorry, this is incorrect. I apologize, I just want to get you the right numbers. Okay, so 70, 70 of the 81 properties contain single-family homes, and 11 contain duplexes, and that includes the subject site. There are no designated land use features adjacent to the site, and it's not located within any designated land use features either. Minnehaha Avenue is a community corridor, and that's two and a half blocks to the west. There are also medium and high-density resident, residential zoning classifications along the Minnehaha corridor. And Hayawatha is about six blocks to the west, and that contains industrial zoning and also high-density residential zoning as long, as well as the Metro Blue Line light rail transit route. So this survey shows you the layout of the existing site with the two-story structure and the detached garage. Here are the floor plans. The only thing before each night is the rezoning. And again, this is to add an accessory dwelling unit, that's the primary goal of the rezoning request. So staff has made findings in response to the, I'm sorry, has made responses in, in response to the five findings for the rezoning. And for the first one, whether the amendment is consistent with the applicable policies of the comprehensive plan, the designated, the designated land use, future land use is urban neighborhood. As I mentioned, the site is not adjacent to any designated nodes, corridors, or other land use features that would support higher density. And although it is within the 38th Street Station area plan, that plan does not have any guidance about adding the density to this specific area. The second finding is whether the amendment is in the public interest and not solely for the interest of the property owner. And the proposed rezoning, again, is not supported by any, any broader policies that would make it beneficial to the public interest. Third, whether existing uses of the property and zoning classification are compatible with the proposed zoning classification of R2B. As I've mentioned, the block and the surrounding area are zoned R1A, and the proposal would not be compatible based on the fact that 70 of the 81 properties within a 350-foot radius contain single-family homes, and only 11 contain duplexes. Fourth finding, whether there are reasonable uses that exist under the existing zoning classification. Staff finds that reasonable uses are allowed under the existing classification, including the property's current use as a legally non-conforming duplex. Fifth, whether there has been a change in the character of the general area which has taken place since the property was placed in its present zoning classification. The R1A designation has been there since 1963, and the area immediately surrounding the site really has not changed since the 1963 zoning code. If you go a little bit broader out, as I mentioned, Hayawatha has seen a little bit more intense development, but the area really immediately surrounding the site has not seen a large change. Staff is recommending denial based on these five findings, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Commissioners, are there any questions of staff? Commissioner Rockwell, did you have, no, oh, I'm sorry. Commissioner Bender?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I wondered if you could give us more detail on the proposed accessory dwelling unit?
We, yeah, we do not have plans at this moment, but I believe the applicant would eventually like to add a detached accessory dwelling unit.
You know, or maybe the applicant could speak to this.